And I apologize, I cannot figure out how to um add my last name. And I couldn't figure out my laptop either, so.
That's okay, we've had several tech issues over the year.
No technology, not always your friend.
Yep. Alrighty, team, it looks like we are live on Facebook, awesome. So I'm calling this meeting to order at seven oh two P M. Good evening, it is March twenty fourth. Today's a big meeting, we are voting on our annual budget. So thank you for those who are joining us, thank you to those who are on this call. Um and we will start with our pledge of allegiance. So go ahead and join us. And you unmute yourselves and place your right hand over your heart and join me in in singing the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Awesome, thanks so much, make sure to mute yourselves. Awesome, and just to begin, uh Veronica, do you mind having or getting us? A roll call for attendance purposes, thank you.
Yes. Roll call for attendance, Ms. Cabral.
Present.
Ms. Alfaro.
Present.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Present.
Mister Oregan.
Yeah.
Ms. Hernandez.
Present.
Ms. Abbott.
Present.
Ms. Garcia.
Here.
Mister Jimenez. Ms. Velez. The seven present and two absent.
Seven present and two absent, thank you so much Veronica. I'm quickly checking who else we have on the call. Uh we have our city counselor, Teneri Garcia, so thank you for joining us, city council rep. Um do we have any of our student, oh yes Valerie is here, thank you so much, our student reps are in are in the building, we're in the room, thank you for joining us tonight. Um great, so let's get started, team, I will.
Um Chair Garcia, I'm having um difficulties accessing the shared screen, so I just um once I get access to share screen, I can post the agenda.
Awesome, thanks so much and good luck. Alrighty team, usually, let's see, I can pull it up on my phone as well. The next thing, team, do I have an approve or motion to approve? The minutes of the regular meeting from March third and the public hearing on March tenth.
I make a motion to accept the meetings for the March tenth and third of meetings.
I second the motion.
And thank you so much. Veronica, do we have any public comments for tonight's meeting?
Sorry, we do not.
Great, and so the next thing is on the agenda for those who are not uh can't see the agenda is the reports from those our superintendent and so just patiently wait for Doctor Veda. In the meantime, I invite our school committee members um to share any words on Women History Month uh for a quick second if they want to unmute themselves and share um who they admire during this month. It's an important month. Are there any members, feel free to unmute yourselves and and share.
I definitely would love to highlight Katanji Brown Jackson's confirmation hearing right now, it's wonderful to see more black women represented in all aspects of our government, whether it is um on the local level all the way up to the federal level, and I hope that many of our students within Chelsea Public Schools can see her as a role model as well.
Awesome, thank you so much, Kat or Mr. Brown. I will continue, let's pause that conversation, we can finish that at the end of our meeting. Thank you, now we have our agenda up and I will turn it over to our superintendent, Doctor Veda.
Okay, great, thank you. So for my report, we have no presentations tonight, um so we can jump right into the student representative updates, if our students have any updates.
Hello, um my name is Valerie Creighton. Um I had the opportunity to speak with some juniors and they shared with me that they feel a little bit unprepared um to be seniors next year. They came into high school their freshman year, then got sent home due to COVID, then came back to being a junior and now preparing themselves for being a senior, although this does not represent how all juniors feel. I believe that this is important to address, I can imagine that some sophomores and freshmen probably feel the same in a sense. Therefore, there could possibly be some extra workshops regarding their future for these students who need them. With that, they also mentioned needing more guidance counselors as is as it is often difficult to book meetings with them due to their busy schedules.
Valerie, thank you so much for sharing, juniors. Good luck, you got this, and before you know it, you will be seniors, so get ready, enjoy your summers, finish your junior year and and best of luck. I know that you have a whole team behind you, we are here for you and and you can count on us, first of all. Thank you so much Valerie.
And next, we have our committee reports. So those just need to be voted on to be accepted.
Awesome, team, do I have a motion to accept or to commend the committee reports to the report?
I command, I make a motion to commend the reports to the report, please.
I second that.
Great. Alrighty. So the first item uh under new business is consideration and action to forego school choice for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. And before I go, um I open it up for a roll call, I'd like to turn it over to Doctor Veda to explain what the yes vote means and what a no vote means on this.
So I am recommending that we forego school choice in order to have seats for Chelsea students. And so in foregoing school choice, what we're saying is that we would not accept students from out of district and that we will only accept students that live here in Chelsea Public Schools and all of our seats will be for students in Chelsea Public Schools, so in this case, a consideration in action to forego school choice, you would you would vote yes to not have it.
Thank you, Doctor Veda, school committee members, are there any questions before we go for a vote? And I can't see any everyone, so feel free to unmute yourselves and you'll have the floor if you have any questions. Alrighty, Veronica, roll call please for this.
Consideration and action to forego school choice for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Ms. Cabral.
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Mister Oregan.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
I think yes. This this vote always confuses me.
Ms. Garcia.
Yeah, yes, excuse me.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the for affirmative, motion carries. Next team, we will be voting on our annual budget, but before that, I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Doctor Veda, who will share memo with us.
Thank you so much, Chair Garcia. Um I just, I do wanna um say a few words before the vote. Uh so I am actually really pleased to present for your consideration, the budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Um this budget aligns to our vision as outlined in our district strategic plan. And it also provides the financial resources to execute our strategy to to meet our goals. And our vision is Chelsea Public Schools is a gateway system that welcomes and educates all students. One part of this budget is the Student Opportunity Act. And the Student Opportunity Act is a long-awaited overhaul of the state's funding formula for public education. The bill lays out the infusion of one point five billion into districts over seven years. And that started the first year, last year was in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. In particular, this bill tackles inequity and how funds are directed to districts across the state by requiring more funds for school systems with higher percentages of low-income students and English language learners. As a direct result of this bill, Chelsea Public Schools is slated to receive seventy million over the next five years. So this budget year is actually year two. The twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal budget reflects the second year of implementation of this bill with Chelsea Public Schools receiving just over nine million as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. We are grateful for all who have advocated for this bill to be passed and the Chelsea's community had really advocated for the Student Opportunity Bill. Thus, our total projected budget for this fiscal year, coming fiscal year is a total of a hundred and eighteen million. After careful analysis of stakeholder input and achievement data, we created this proposed budget that is focused on the themes of restore and rebuild. This budget supports the continued restoration of resources to supporting teaching and learning and the rebuilding of an improved and equitable school system. We have done our best to ensure that we focus on our students who have the highest need to close achievement and opportunity gaps and increasing wages for our students. Our we are confident that this budget reflects what we heard from multiple stakeholders and aligns to our strategy with the ultimate goal of ensuring that our students graduate by literate, digitally literate, and college and career ready. We would like to thank the many stakeholders who participated in the process. Also, a thank you to the city of Chelsea for continually supporting Chelsea Public Schools and investing in education that brings the highest return to your community. So at this time, I um am recommending this budget to you.
Thanks so much, Doctor Veda. Uh team, I'd like to open it up before we go in for a vote, um if if there are any questions or comments on this year's annual budget that uh our team has presented to us. Any questions, I'm trying to check the the screens uh to make sure I don't miss any hands or questions.
Mother Chair, may I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Alfaro, you have the floor.
Yeah, just wanted to know, like, this is just presented to us um without having the the chapter seventy from the state money and then that will be amended, right, once we receive it, this is just a projection for the next fiscal year.
Ms. Alfaro, uh this budget in includes all is inclusive of Student Opportunity Act which is included in chapter seventy, so the amount that you see here is all of chapter seventy.
Got it, thank you, um Ms. Veda for explaining it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Alrighty, team, consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent and approve the following line item amounts from the general fund for the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school budget totaling a hundred and eighteen million two hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred, six hundred and seventeen dollars. And in front of you, you see each action line item. And so, uh Doctor Veda, do you mind scrolling down, thank you. Explanation. The annual school budget must be approved by the school committee prior to April first of each year pursuant to the city charter and after a public hearing is held to provide an opportunity to hear public comment on the budget. The school committee has authority to approve budgets under state law and city charter. Roll call please, Veronica.
Consideration and action to accept the recommend, oops, I'm sorry. Um consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent and approve the following line item amounts for the general fund for the twenty-two, twenty-three school budget totaling one hundred and eighteen million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Ms. Cabral.
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Mister Oregan.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Abbott.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
That's seven in the affirmative and the motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to accept two hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-two from T E S C for the acceleration, accelerating literacy learning with high-quality instructional materials grant. Explanation, the purpose of this grant is to equip schools and districts with high-quality instructional materials that are needed to accelerate literacy learning as schools recover from extended closures and students require rich instructional support to accelerate their learning. Funds will be used to purchase high-quality core instructional materials for grades K through five. Roll call please.
Consideration and action to accept two hundred thousand dollars for F Y twenty-two from D E S C for the accelerating literacy learning and with high-quality instructional materials grant. Ms. Cabral.
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Mister Oregan.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Abbott.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, two absence, the motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to approve above the budget. Um oh, wait a minute, did I miss something? Yes, I did, sorry. Um consideration and action. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay, consideration and action to accept two hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-two from T E S C for the Gateway City Grants for High-Quality Intensive English Language Learning Program Grant. Explanation, the purpose of this grant is to help Gateway School Districts implement new and innovative supports for English language education programs. Funds will be used to invest in written materials and languages other than English, including school library books, classroom texts, and take-home books for students at the Early Learning Center, the Kelly School, and the Brown School in addition. Funds will be available for stipends and other supplies and materials in support of this program. Roll call please.
Consideration and action to accept two hundred thousand dollars for the F Y twenty-two from D E S C for the Gateway City Grants for High-Quality Intensive English Language Learning Program Grant. Ms. Cabral.
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Mister Oregan.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Abbott.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
That's seven in the affirmative, two absence, the motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of up to one point seven two five million dollars to move funds from benefits and payroll adjustments, other educational programs, and for schools to facilities and transportation. Explanation, this transfer will move savings from benefits and payroll adjustments, other educational programs, the Early Learning Center, Berkowitz Elementary School, Hook's Elementary School, and Clark Avenue Middle School to facilities and transportation to continue to fund one-time building improvements, furniture and other building-related projects. Roll call please.
Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of up to one point seven two five million to move funds from benefits and payroll adjustments, other educational programs, and for schools to facility and transportation. Ms. Cabral.
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Mister Oregan.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Abbott.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to approve the updated crossing guard paid holidays. Explanation, the crossing guard contract was missing June teen as a paid holiday, all amendments must be approved by the school committee. Roll call please.
Consideration and action to approve the updated crossing guard paid holidays. Ms. Cabral.
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Mister Oregan.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Abbott. Ms. Abbott.
Yes.
And Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
The seven in the affirmative and two absent.
That's seven in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next up, we have Mister Jimenez moves to accept the Chelsea Public Schools calendar for school year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh roll call please.
Uh except um consideration action to accept the Chelsea Public School calendar for school year twenty-two and twenty-three. Ms. Cabral.
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Mister Oregan.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Abbott.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
That's seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Alrighty, team, that wraps up our meeting, we have a few communications announcements and so before I'd like to open it up to the team, I'd like for us to all please do keep our student who was hit uh in a car accident or by a car today at the crosswalk uh in our prayers. And so um our prayers are with the family and for all of our students across the district. I'd also ask our school committee members and anyone on the team uh for a moment of silence for Jeanette Cardia, our former teacher who passed away. And so, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the school committee for any announcements or uh comments, questions they'd like to share out with the community. Anyway, I have a quick announcement, uh team and families who are home watching us, uh we are hosting our annual Easter basket distribution on April fourteenth, and so we are super excited to spread joy in the city of Chelsea around this time. Easter is around the corner and so is the springtime, so we are super excited to host that event and hope that you all can can join us. Alrighty, team, any other comments or questions? Alright, Doctor Veda, am I forgetting anything?
I just have two quick things, we we are hosting a vaccination clinic at the complex next week, so we'll be sending communication out, it's posted on our social media, so that's for our five to eleven-year-olds. And we are very proud of our family liaisons and our schools. Um the work of family and community engagement was featured in um a district administration, which is a national-known um publication for educators. And so um shout out to our family liaisons and our principals for the work that we are doing with families, we're really proud of that work. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Doctor Veda. I echo all of our team, oh, I hear someone, can't see you, so go ahead and unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, um I just wanted to add because of the vaccination clinic and everything, um I just wanted to add quickly to just be really vigilant, remind everybody to be really vigilant about um symptoms of COVID because I contracted it and I gave it to my hundred-and-two-year-old grandmother and which is really, really scary. And I did feel like I had a little cold and I did not test myself when I should have and I had not been wearing a mask for two weeks. Um so it's a lot more communicable than it had been prior and I just wanna remind everybody, I'm not advocating for or against masks, but if you feel like you are possibly at all sick, um I would encourage you to take a test if you have, and Chelsea has been giving out those home tests, we we have them. Um so I encourage everybody to really just take note and protect the people around you, people you know, people you don't know. Um cuz it's really, really, really scary and you don't wanna be in a position of having gotten somebody sick. So that's my P S A and thank you, um yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott, and we are all keeping your grandmother in our prayers and wishing the best. And thank you for the reminder. A team to go quickly back to my original question of which uh who is the woman that you identify, or I'm sorry, that you admire during this month? Uh my mom, my mom is the strongest lady out there that I know. Uh she is my best friend and I aspire to be a strong, resilient woman like her um as I get older. So I'd like to open it up to the team, uh feel free to share any comments or um any highlights uh for for this month. Thank you, Ms. Cabral, for for your insight earlier in the meeting. Thank you.
Um I I know I just spoke, but I would like to speak again and I actually didn't hear that at the beginning because I was helping my grandmother. Um but speaking of grandma, as I said, she's a hundred and two, um there she is, everybody can see her, wave grandma. Wave. Anyway, she she can't really see you guys, um but uh she's so with it, she's she can't hear particularly, but so with it and um just sharp, 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 and I I told her childhood and she got dressed, she even put on her B R A, which I can't, I'm I cannot imagine. Um but so there's just a lot, a lot to be said for that, being a strong strong human being, a strong woman, so that's who I'm celebrating, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott, hi grandma.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Ms. Hernandez.
So I, so the two women that were the the strong people in my life that I looked up to and were my heroes, were my grandma, my mom, both of which are gone, my mom I lost two years ago. Um but now I look up to Naomi's grandma, she is like I can't imagine being a hundred and two and being that strong, but like my mom used to say, they don't make them like that anymore, we would never survive. Like we would never survive, we don't have, we don't have the strength that they had. They were, they were in a different era, they were so resilient. Um so Naomi, God bless her, take care of her and and enjoy every minute you have with her. Um she's amazing. My grandmom died at ninety and she was so strong and went through so much and and my mom the same, but um they don't make them like that anymore. So enjoy her.
Thank you, I am, for sure, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Can I also highlight that our school committee is major uh has the uh we are majority women, and so applaud and snaps to us, all the love. We are, and Sean, shout out to you. we are majority women. And so applaud and snaps to us, all the love. We are, and Sean, shout out to you. Currently the only man of on this call, it's you and Roberto, pero, um, we, I admire all the women on this board and I could not do this without the support that each and every one of you provide. Shout out to Almi, who came in during a pandemic to lead a school district. I mean, my hat goes off to you, Monica, Christine, um, and the list goes on. Veronica, thank you for all that you do for us. It does not, your work does not go unseen. You take notes in all of our meetings, make sure that we have all the things that we need to run these productive meetings and get everything that we need to be able to vote on policy and and again, the list goes on. And so thank you. Alrighty, team, with that, I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second that.
Jeez, Sean, you didn't let me cut, you didn't let the, good night, everyone.
Well, in all fairness, he is working with a bunch of women, so.
He's quick.